It is seven o'clock. We're going to begin our meeting. It's time to call the October term of the Williams County Board of County Commissioners, and we thank each of you for being here tonight. Also during this meeting, as it is a legislative body of Williamson County, we'd ask your participation and cooperation. If you have a cell phone, please turn it off, put it on silence or whatever so that you don't interrupt our meeting tonight. We want to thank Sergeant Lynn Sutton for being here with us. We also have Sheriff Jeff Long and some other of our uniformed officers here tonight, and we thank them for being here as a part of our meeting. Tonight, to open the meeting, Brother, Brother Bert Chalfont, our Reverend up here, Brother Chalfont, Bert Chalfont will be leading us in our invocation, and I'd ask you to stand for that. And then following that, we've got some folks with us tonight that'll be doing the pledge to the flag, Den Number 10, Nancy Warden, Wee Blows One, Oakview Elementary School is here to present our colors and lead us in the pledge to the flag. So at this time, if you give your attention to Commissioner Chalfont, please.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, again, we give you thanks for the opportunity of serving our county. We give you thanks for this beautiful Williamson County and all that it has to offer to so many people. Bless the deliberations this evening that they may be acceptable in thy sight, for we ask in the name of thy Son, our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Will the audience please rise for the presentation of the colors? Our guard advance. Scout's move. When the audience please join me in the pledge of allegiance, I-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
We just have special guest troop 130 Pedro Patrol appears Chapel Church of Christ, the trip leader is Doug Haline, like Halloween.
Want to thank again Den Number 10 and Nancy Warden from Oakview Elementary, the Wee Blows One group that presented her colors tonight. We also have troop Number 130 from Berry's Chapel Church of Christ under the leadership of Doug Haline. Haline, you folks stand up and let us recognize you if you would, please. Thank you for being here. Pedro Patrol. Pedro Patrol. I wanted to try to get it right. Troop Number 130, Pedro Patrol, Berry's Chapel Church of Christ. Thank you for being here tonight. We'll have a roll call vote. If you're present, press your white button so we can calculate the roll call. I'm only aware that Commissioner Tommy Little is absent tonight. Tommy is a little bit under the weather and want to wish him well, and certainly will miss him in our deliberations here tonight. Madam Clerk, if you'll record the roll, please.
We have 23 present, one absent.
Thank you. Twenty-three present, one absent, and thank you very much for being here tonight. Introduction and acceptance, excuse me, approval of the minutes of the September 8, 2008 County Commission meeting. These copies were sent to each member of the County Commission. Motion by Commissioner Chalfont, second by Commissioner Barnwell. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous. Introduction and acceptance of Highway Commission minutes. Those who were sent out to you, entertain a motion to accept those.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Walton, Commissioner Russell Little II. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous, please. Citizens Communication. We have one person that signed up to address the Audience, address the Commission. If you would come forward, Mr. Lynch, please identify yourself and give us your name and address and that information, and we'll allow you to address the Williams County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you letting us be here tonight. My name is Chuck Lynch. We've lived on Old Hillsborough Road for 47 years. When we moved to Williamson County, the population was going down every year, and we have a small family farm. We've built it up through the years. We're trying to maintain it, trying to keep the places clean and proper and historic as what everybody I think here wants Williamson County to be. Our house and barn has been featured in over 30 video productions, including the Billy Graham Christmas Show less than two years ago. But, we have a problem. We have an ongoing problem with illegal right-of-way signs. Open house, yard sale, realty for sale, whatever you want to call them, the trashy little signs that get put up. This came to a big head on September 7. The police were called. It was very nasty. There is one particular real estate agent with Bob Parks Realty in our neighborhood who refuses to keep her signs down. The biggest problem we have on the weekends is there's no enforcement. Now, we live at the corner of Old Hillsborough Road and Old Natchez Trace. We're on a state road. Across from us is a county road. There is, or has been up to this point, a gray area who enforces what. Well, obviously, you're the County Commission. The county laws are what they are. Ms. Hodges has done a fantastic job in enforcing it. I have a copy here of the state law I'd like to present to the Commission. I'm not sure who to give it to.
Present to the Chair.
Simply put, that state law says it's also illegal to place signs anywhere on state right-of-way and makes a Class C misdemeanor. This day, and especially September 7, when the police were called, not only did they not enforce the law, I was threatened with arrest if I removed a sign. Through diligent years, over 10 years of communication with the County and the State, I have been told that any sign that meets these descriptions placed in the right-of-way is to be considered litter and that anybody can pull them and dispose of them, just like you would a beer bottle from Saturday night. Now, I'm being threatened by the County Police that if I touch a sign, I'll be going to jail. I've asked them to look at the law. They have refused to look at the law. They said, "We're not sign police." I said, "Would you please look at this copy?" He says, "I only enforce the laws that are handed down to me from above." So what I'd like to do, if possible, is ask the Commission to communicate with the Sheriff's Department, explain the law to them. I'm not asking for any new laws. I'm just asking for the laws on the books to be enforced, and I'm asking not to be threatened by the police again for trying to keep this county what we all want it to be. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, sir.
The Citizens Communication, we don't get into discussion, and all I would ask you to do as Chairman of this body, Mr. Lynch, is you meet with Mr. Joe Horn or someone of responsibility in the County and to get the people involved in that because this issue- You're finished. That's it. Just if you would, follow up with Mr. Horn, and we'll take whatever action needs to be done within the framework that the laws of the County have been enforced. Appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Okay, we're into Communications and Messages, and if you could, please, this is going to take just a few minutes because we've got several changes, and we've got several updates with things that have been laid at your place that I want to go through and explain what you have at your desk. First, on your desk tonight, there's a presentation or a memorandum that's from Mark Shore, our Executive Director of the Williams County Convention Visitors Bureau that is laid at your place. Mark will be addressing and giving us some comment on that in just a few minutes, so please make attention to that. Also, we've got three late filed resolutions tonight that we need to take into consideration and under advisement, if there's no objection. Late filed Resolution 100821. This resolution was late filed. The resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to enter into an easement with the City of Franklin for the installation of water and sewer improvements sponsored by Commissioner Davis. Any objection to hearing late filed Resolution 100821?
It was mailed out in the packet.
It was mailed out in the packet, so that information is there. There is no objection, so we will add Resolution 100821 right after 100820 under Appropriations. Resolution 100822?
Twenty-one's on the agenda under Other. It's not appropriation.
Is it listed under Other? Okay, well, it's listed under Other. They just indicated to me, so let's move it. Let's see. That's not a funding resolution, is it?
No, sir. It just stays where it is.
Okay, we'll leave it where it is in the packet, 100821, last item under Other. It's not a funding resolution. My apology. And then Resolution 100822. Resolution-
These were the ones I was just passing.
Yep. These resolutions, it's a late resolution filed 100822, authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing general obligation bond anticipation notes for $23 million. This is sponsored by Commissioner Lynch to get the bond funding situation taken care of, and they tell me that you've received the front two pages of this resolution that's handed out at your place. If you want the full copy of the total resolution, Diane has that here. Any objection to hearing 100822? I see none, so we'll add that to the resolutions for the funding resolutions. And then 100823, late file resolution, and the same type of thing for $17 million. Again, you've been given the top sheet of that resolution with all the addenda that's attached there, too. If you need it, Diane has a copy of that. Any objection to hearing 100823?
Commissioner Barnwell.
Commissioner Barnwell, please.
I just received two of Number 22, and I didn't receive 23.
I can fix one.
Okay, thank you.
Any objection? Is that an objection, Commissioner Barnwell?
I'm not objecting. I just would like-
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Set the record clear here. No objections. We'll add that to the funding resolutions as late file resolution. If you would, look down under Other for Resolution 10086. That resolution is an appropriation resolution, and I'm going to just slide it up three slots and have it as the last appropriation resolution heard under Appropriations. So 10086 is an appropriation resolution. We need to move that up under Appropriations and take care of that this evening. Also would bring to your attention the handouts, mailouts, excuse me, get all my terminology here accurate. Mrs. Anderson has mailed to you a new set of attachments for Resolution 10087, 10088, and of course, late file resolution 100821. So, as indicated, there was a mix-up on the correct attachments. All of that has now been corrected. You should have the full correct resolution in your hand that was mailed out that was there.
If anybody needs those.
Anybody have those? Also at your place tonight is a map that I've asked Bobby to hand out that's impacting one of the resolutions on the land swamp with the town of Nolansville. You have that map that addresses and shows the piece of property that we are swapping and giving up to the City of Nolansville for the piece of property that's over adjacent to the old sewer location, our sewer plant location, and across the fence from the Nolansville Church of Christ. So, you also have at your place tonight, some folks got it and some people didn't, but you've got the election and appointment sheet for Robin Baldry that's here tonight for appointment to the planning commissions. Just point you that that information is there at your place. And then there's a proposed amendment that's to Resolution Number 100820 that we'll be talking about later on in the meeting tonight. You also have a notice from the Human Resources Committee about a meeting on Monday, October 20. And then finally, at your place, and we'll say more about this tomorrow night, but at your place tonight, the school committee with the special committee, the ad hoc committee that the Education Committee appointed to meet with the school system as it relates to funding, funding needs for the building program for the Williams County school system. That ad hoc committee has now met twice, and there's been information that has come out of that committee that is being laid here for your information to all Commissioners. There's a special called meeting that Commissioner Barnwell has called for the Education Committee that will meet tomorrow night in the conference room across from the Mayor's Office at 5:30, so I would encourage everyone to be in attendance if you can at that meeting. So all of that information's in a folder that looks like this, and all of that will be taken up and discussed in full detail tomorrow night. I think those are all the changes and the corrections that we needed to make before we get started in the business tonight under the rest of the report of the officers' offices at this time. Is any other question? Anybody else got anything to report? If you- We'll get into the committee reports as we go down. So at this time, I'll recognize County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, just go ahead and have David give us the financial overview and update.
Mr. Chairman, we have several things we'll be dealing with during the meeting tonight, but I would just, at this time, go ahead and cover those three reports that we kind of give to you each month and kind of get those out of the way, and then we'll be prepared to answer questions on the resolutions. First report you have in your packet is from the Coles Springs Conference Center, and as you recall, in July, they did have a down month, and we had to send them a check, but as we had hoped would happen, they bounced back, and we received a check for $57,000 this month. So, they are back on track, and we hope that will continue.
Thank you.
The next report is our monthly budget report to the County Commission, and just because of what everything was going on, we normally would be like a month behind on this report as far as getting it ready for you, but we've kind of hurried September up a little bit, so we've given you August and September. That will give you the first quarter through September 30. And looking at that report, Mr. Chairman, there's nothing in there that would be outstanding or unusual as far as that point of time in the year. You might look at some of those revenue line items and say, "Well, we're running a little behind," but let's keep in mind that the tax bills just went out this month, and we really won't start seeing property tax to any great degree late October, November, December. And then the final report that we give to you each month is the privileged tax report for the month of September. Continues to be at a downward spiral. Just to give you one bit of information, we went back and did a comparison to last year, and for the month of July, August, and September this year, we collected $653,000 total for those three months. In August of last year, before we started seeing the decline, for the one month of August, we collected $709,000. So, the first three months of this year do not add up to the last good month of collections in August of '07. So, you can see the continual fall of the privileged tax. Mr. Chairman, that's all of our regular reports. If any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Commissioner Smith, please.
Mr. Coleman, we've talked about this before. You mentioned the decline in privileged tax. Is there a report you could provide us that would show comparative month-to-month privileged tax collections that goes back with some history so we can get a visual feel for what that's doing? And also, could you, is it possible to provide the same information for sales tax receipts?
Yes, sir. We can do that. I think I gave you one, I believe, in July. We had a little graph, and we'll try to update that and get it back to you. Sales tax, we can do a similar thing on that. Of course, the largest portion of the sales tax is through the school system, so we can take a look at that, and we can either have it come out of Mr. Davis's office in total, which he prepares a monthly report, or we can break it down and give it to you.
Okay. Either way. Other questions, Mr. Coleman? I see none.
Mr. Chairman, I might just mention the two late filed resolutions and the other two bond resolutions that are at the very end of the appropriations. I'm sure there'll be quite a bit of discussion on that, but at that time, we'd like to maybe have the opportunity to discuss all four of those kind of as a package because they all work together.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I want to report is that for the last two and a half weeks, almost on a daily basis, we have been meeting, David and I have been meeting along with other people, and because of the unprecedented market conditions that have caused several of the Wall Street firms and large banks to recently collapse, and interest on the municipal bonds just drastically risen, we met with our, last week, we had the Department Head meeting, and I have implemented several changes that you all should know about. This was not done off the cuff, but it was done with deliberate, a lot of deliberations with David, looking at a lot of numbers over the last several, several weeks, couple of weeks. As you have heard David say, the privileged tax is off significantly, our sales tax is flat, new home construction is trending downward, and existing home sales are likewise off. So, effective last Thursday, we will be relaying this message on to other elected officials, other appointed officials, and we would ask that the school board also implement some of these and look at theirs, what they can. The following things will be taking effect, some of them already. We will put an immediate hiring freeze on all open positions, with the exception of emergency personnel, including sheriff. We will implement a freeze on all overtime except for emergencies, as approved by myself. We will put an immediate freeze on all expenditures for office furnitures and computers, except those approved in advance by the Purchasing Director, Budget Director, and my signature. We have asked each director to submit a plan by two weeks, in two weeks, to have a 10% reduction in their operating budgets for the '08, '09 years. This is not to say that we're in a panic mode, but we want to be in a position to deal with the changes that are taking place daily. Although the stock market did go up considerable today, as many of you are probably aware, what we're trying to do is preserve what we've got, and I want to leave you with that impression that we do have money in the bank, but I think it's prudent upon all of us to step back and look and be patient with some of the things that are going on at a national level, and we have to do the same here at the local level. So, I will be asking Clyde, as Budget Chairman, to help us out in these areas. We would ask that the other elected officials who have not been made known, not been notified of this, we will be notifying them also to ask them to help, and as I've indicated, I would ask the schools to also look at their individual budgets and save and preserve as much money as we possibly can for next year's budget. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions of Mayor Anderson? Thank you, Mayor. Schools Director, Dr. Rebecca Sharber.
I just have a brief report for you this evening. This is the end of the nine weeks this week, and at the end of the week, we will be having fall break, so the students and schools will be closed on Thursday and Friday. The central office will be closed on Friday, just so you'll know that in case you needed us on Friday. Report cards will go out this week and next week. Some of the middle and high school report cards should be mailed Wednesday, and the elementary school report cards will go out next week, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of Dr. Sharber? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, hospital report.
Good evening. Just got a few things for you as more information. On Thursday, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., we'll have the dedication of our outpatient emergency center on Carruthers. The ribbon cutting will be at 4:00 p.m., so if y'all can come, we'd appreciate it. We're very excited about getting it out, and I think it'll enhance our patient care. We have the grand opening of the diagnostic center in partnership with St. Thomas down at Tolgate and Thompson Station last week, so that's coming out of the ground. Also, the garage, I know several people in here, including Doug Hood, are going to like this, the garage is supposed to open mid-November, so it's on schedule. And the only other thing, it's not doom and gloom at the hospital, but we're the slowest we've ever been, and all other hospitals have seen a decrease in patients, and it's because of the economy. People are putting off any elective surgeries, and they're afraid to take off work to have surgery or diagnostic procedures, but hopefully knock on wood it will come back. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of Mr. Miller? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask our property assessor, Dennis Anglin, to address the Commission. There have been some questions and comments recently about the tax bills and some information, and just for your information to keep you posted, Dennis is here. Thank you, Dennis, for being here. I know his voice is about voiced out on him, but we won't let him speak too long. Dennis, give us an update on where things are and what's happening in the assessor's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for letting me get on early and get on home tonight. We put an ad in this morning, Williamson AM. As all of you know, we've had a major software conversion in the assessor's office, and of course, we had to do the tax extra-
And the only other thing, it's not doom and gloom at the hospital, but we're the slowest we've ever been. And all other hospitals have seen a decrease in patients. And it's because of the economy. People are putting off any elective surgeries, and they're afraid to take off work to have surgery or diagnostic procedures. But hopefully, knock on wood, he'll come back. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of Mr. Miller? I see none. Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to ask our property assessor, Dennis Anglin, to address the commission. There have been some questions and comments recently about the tax bills and some information. And just for your information to keep you posted, Dennis is here. Thank you, Dennis, for being here. I know his, his voice is about voiced out on him, but we won't let him speak too long. Dennis, give us an update on where things are and what's happening in the assessor's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for letting me get on early and get on home tonight. We put an ad in this morning, Williamson A.M. As all of you know, we've had a major software conversion in the assessor's office. And of course, we had to do the tax extracts to prepare Mr. Davis's tax rolls. And Joey is here tonight to answer any other questions that maybe you have of him. But if you haven't seen the notice, what it read was, "Due to a major software conversion in the assessor's office, some information on your 2008 tax bill may be incorrect. We want to assure you that this information is correct within our in-house system. We are diligently working to relieve concerns for homeowners who notice incorrect items on their tax bills. Your tax dollar amounts were not, and we underscore it a knot, affected by this conversion." Now, I did hear from one commissioner tonight that there was an amount question that he had today, and we will look into that tomorrow. We don't know whether that's a conversion or some other amount error. And then I put in there, "Please feel free to notify our office if you want to verify your information in our system." This notice was placed in the paper to squash any rumors that tax amount or values were affected in this conversion. They were not. One of our neighboring counties, five years ago, had a major software conversion in the assessor's office, and there were bills that went out that year with the wrong tax amounts on them due to a city code number being wrong. We didn't want that to happen. We, we ran five extracts, and we chose the final one. We ran five before we chose one. And Joey's office was, was involved in those tax extracts to a large degree. We applied five different county rates, six different city rates, and one SSD rate to $27 billion in appraised value and over $7 billion in assessed value, and we come down to the penny in money. $190,761,81 and 3 cents. So the conversion was an excellent conversion as far as the tax amount and the values were concerned. We do have some errors where there's some acreage changes. We did have one line that showed up on the tax bills. If you were under the agricultural act and you had rotation land and woodland and pasture land, whatever the acres were on the top line, if it said woodland 10 acres, for some reason or another, that tax extract doubled at one line. So we do have some errors out there. I do want to say that, that we don't feel like that we've got even 7,000 out there. And we converted over 7 million bytes of information. And if we don't even have 7,000, we don't have 1,000 of a percent error rate. So, so I'm proud of the conversion. I'm not going to sit here and tell you any problems. I'm not going to sit here and tell you any issues. We've been doing this for three years. This was our first year to prepare an assessment roll and a tax roll on our new software. And overall, it, it went fairly well.
Any questions of Mr. Anglin? I think the message to the, the folks that will be watching this, Dennis, if they have any questions, give you a call.
Sure. And we want that. We want, and we're getting a lot of calls, not just because of the conversion. We always get calls when, when Mr. Davis sends out his tax bills. We get those, we, we expect those, and he gets them too. So, but we don't know what percentage is, is software conversion and what percentage is normal tax questions.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll let you go home.
Thank you.
Joey, you want to add anything? Is that it?
No, sir. Money rolling in.
Good. Keep on collecting.
Yes, sir.
The, the other report that Commissioner Hayes is asking Commissioner Smith, they've worked very closely with our new executive director, Mark Shaw. Mark, come on forward and give us a quick synopsis of what's happening in the, your department, and then we'll jump on to the rest of the agenda, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the opportunity to come before you tonight. Commissioners, I have provided for you a memorandum that tells you a little bit of information about the economic impact of tourism. In our industry, we watch this as a key indicator. This information came out at the end of September at the Tennessee Governor's Conference on Tourism and basically ranks all of the counties in the state of Tennessee in terms of tourism and travel-related expenditures. We're pleased to say that we've stayed in the number eight spot, even though Rutherford County is nipping at our heels. We had a 7.3% growth in travel-related expenditures in 2007. That is above the state average and is one of the highest in the region here in what they call the Mid Cumberland region. So we're pleased with the results that have come in. Obviously, our visitor-related spending equates to lodging tax revenues and sales tax revenues from those folks who are coming here, spending their money, and then going back home. And we're glad to announce that that, that number seems to be tracking well. I've also included the, basically, the, the most important two pages from the actual report for your review that shows our standing in about the top 25 there, but it shows our standing as number eight on that list. And then it also shows you the regional rankings in terms of expenditures. The Convention and Visitors Bureau is your marketing arm to make sure that not only these expenditures stay on track, but that they grow on an annual basis. And we are continuing to, to go after that aggressively. We're aware of the economy. We want to keep our conference centers full. Recently, I met with the general managers of the Marriott and the Embassy Suites to make sure that we are aware of trends and ways that we can make sure that our convention center is successful, as well as our, our industry as a whole, so that that lodging tax and the expenditures continue to come in. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you all may have.
Make sure, any questions of Mr. Shaw? Thank you, Commissioner Smith and Hayes for serving on that committee. Commissioner Cook, that's right. Absolutely. Any other questions? Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, on the agenda, any other committee wishing to report to the body tonight? Anybody else? I see none. Moving to the elections and appointments. County mayor's recommendation to the Economic Development Council. Four-year term expiring 10 of 2012, Joe Regan. Nomination, Joe Regan. Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Ford II. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Municipal solid waste board, four-year terms expiring 10, 2012. Steve Worley. Nomination, Steve Worley. Ricky Jones. Nomination, Ricky Jones. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Hayes, the motion. Commissioner Green II. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Williamson County Regional Planning Commission, filling an unexpired term, expiring 3 of 10. Resignation is Dr. Robert Meedall. Nomination, Robin Baldry. Commissioner Walton, the motion. Commissioner Langston II. Any other discussion? Robin, stand up. Robin is here. She's accepting this new assignment. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate your involvement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. We'll let you go to work. Notaries, you've received the notary information that Ms. Anderson sent out to you. You'll entertain a motion to accept the notaries. Commissioner Cook, the motion. Commissioner Wilson II. All in favor of the notaries, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption of the notaries. Commissioner Hancock?
I would like to make an announcement. I missed it when we was going down the reports.
Yes, sir.
That the law enforcement committee meeting for Thursday has been canceled and rescheduled by 6 o'clock the day of the next commission meeting.
All right, sir. Law enforcement committee meeting for this Thursday's been canceled, and they'll meet immediately before the county commission meeting in November. Thank you, sir. There is no consent agenda. We're moving on down now to zoning. We have a public hearing tonight. So at this time, I will open the zoning public hearing. Public hearing regarding resolution number 1008-3. Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted April 18, 1988 as relates to the phasing of installation of non-traditional sewage disposal systems. So at this time, I will declare the public hearing open. If you wish to address the county commission on this resolution, 1008-3, please come to the podium. Give us your name and address. Identify yourself. I'll allow you time to address the commission. Anyone wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Will now move to resolution number 1008-3. A resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted April 13, 1988 as it relates to the phasing of installation of non-traditional sewage disposal systems. Commissioner Walton? Move for approval. Commissioner Bain II. Waste water authority's vote was 5, 4, 0 against. Planning commission? 7, 4, 0 against. Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This amendment will allow the phasing of alternative sewer plants, also known as step systems or Schaefer systems. As currently written, these plants and their treatment areas have had to be built up front or completed. While this appears to work well in areas, in areas where smaller plants are, such as less than 200 homes, it has been found that this can be quite burdensome in different cases on bigger subdivisions. So these amendments provide the framework for phasing these larger plants. Both the water and wastewater authority and the planning commission have recommended these.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Walton on 1008-3? Commissioner Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's the non-residential developments and the residential developments containing 200 or less will continue to operate with the four stipulations?
Correct. What's happening if you had a big development, 500 or 600 homes?
We were requiring to build the complete sewer capacity for that many homes. Well, by the time it was built out, the sewage plant was now 10 years old or so. So we feel like we could build that, have them build it in sections, and it would be more advantageous for everyone concerned.
But they will continue to have to have an operating permit up front from TDEC?
Yeah, they will have to have an operating permit, yeah.
So what of those four items will they not have to have up front?
I'll have to defer to Joe Horn or Kristi.
I mean, I understand the phasing end. That makes sense.
Kristi, would you please?
I'm just not sure which of the four items that have been required will not be required.
Commissioner Brockman, we're not removing any requirements.
Okay.
What we're doing is, where we've had these large subdivisions of 800 homes or whatever, the entire plant for all 800 homes was being built up front because that's what we've required for the first final plat. And so the plant would begin deteriorating before part of it can even be used, which would ultimately result in more cost for the property owners. So as far as the requirements of the Tennessee Regulatory Authority, the TDEC permits, all that, still the same. This just allows the developer and the utility provider at their option for larger subdivisions to break it up into pieces as far as the construction, because a lot of these things can be pieced together. They're almost like in pods to a certain extent. And so when they ask for a final...
So instead of one big lagoon, you've got a small pile of lagoon?
I don't know if the lagoon can be phased, but the lagoon, the spray, the sprayer, the drip areas might in that instance. But they couldn't get a final plat until they have demonstrated that they have installed enough to cover those lots every time.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. 1008-3, there's no further discussion. It's up for consideration. If you're in favor of 1008-3, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
23 ayes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. 23 ayes, 0 no. Resolution 1008-1, resolution appropriating $10,000 additional funds received for the coordinated school health grant from the state. Commissioner Hancock, please.
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Barnwell II. The report of the committees, school board, 12 ayes, 0 no. Education committee?
6, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. 6, 4, 0 against. Budget committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was state money that came from the state that wasn't in the budget that we're adding to it now. It's state revenue of $10,000. And it's going for materials and supplies, other materials and supplies that they help program.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Hancock? I see none. If you're in favor of 1008-1, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Please record a vote, Ms. Anderson.
23 ayes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 1008-2. Resolution appropriating $50,000 from donation from Williamson Works Foundation. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Barnwell II. School board report, 12 ayes, 0 no. Education committee?
6, 4, 0 against.
Thank you, sir. Budget committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Mr. Chairman, this was funds that the board applied for, a donation from the Williamson Works Foundation. Donation of $50,000. It will be spent at the middle, college, high school, and the three fairer schools. This is the kind of thing we'd like to see a lot of, a lot of donations.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ford, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe this is a one-time grant. Is that correct? Since this is a one-time grant, we've got a person being hired here. Should we expect to see that guidance counselor position in the budget next year? Or should we expect that, that position will not be carried forward? Okay, because this is a one-time grant, and I don't think the Williamson Works Foundation is even there. So we won't be able to renew this. So we should, just to reiterate, we should not expect to see that in the budget next year, this position. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you make sure that's in the minutes, please? Other discussion? In favor of 1008-2, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
23 ayes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 1008-12. Resolution transferring the use of funds up to $10,000 within the 2008, '09 capital projects budget for use on Fleming Hall located on the old Battleground Academy property. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes II. Property committee report?
I believe it was 5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Budget committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution that will allow us to basically shore up the roof at Fleming Hall, which is a historic building on the VGA campus. In order to put tarps, there has been a lot of water damage because of leaking in the roof. This would be step one to dry out the building. We heard on the property committee from Rock City Construction, and they had looked at the building structurally and said this was what it would take to do, to do that. So it would be less, less than 10,000, I mean, no more than 10,000. And because the asbestos removal did not use all the funds that had been approved, we're asking for this, this money to go to stabilize the building.
Any questions of Commissioner Brockman? I see none. 1008-12 is up for your consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Does anybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
23 ayes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution 1008-12. Resolution 1008-13, resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-9 public transportation budget by $181,400. Revenues to come from federal funding through the state grant. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook II. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch, please.
What this is, this is federal money that comes through the state to help the carpool van pool in the county.
Questions of Commissioner Lynch. Commissioner Greer, please.
This might seem kind of picky, but in the second whereas, it says aware of the environmental crisis at hand. I have a little problem with calling it a crisis. I would prefer to say that it's an environmental concern, and I'd like to make a motion to that effect for an amendment.
Motion to amend the word crisis to concern. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Para. The motion that's on the floor is to amend that word in the second whereas from crisis to concern. Commissioner Smith, is your discussion on that amendment?
No, it's not.
Okay, I'll come back to you. All in favor of the amendment that's offered by Commissioner Greer, second by Commissioner Para, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution 1008-13 has been amended to read aware of the environmental concern at hand, okay? Commissioner Smith, please.
My question, sir, is I know we have representatives from the TMA group here. I'm wondering if those eight additional vans we're buying, if those are already spoken for by potential users.
They are, they are, they are.
Debbie, would you come to the mic, please? Folks at home can't hear you or see you.
Actually, they are. We have interest from Williamson Medical Center. We're looking at placing at least a couple of them there. Crescent Resources, EMI Christian, all Williamson County employers, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of Ms. Henry? Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 1008-13 as amended is up for consideration. It's on the machine. Any other questions? Commissioner Jones, do you have a question? Let me come back to Commissioner Jones. I didn't see, okay?
Yes, I was just going to ask if we've had a spike in passengers due, and could you give us some information on that?
We have had a tremendous spike in the interest and in the passengers in our Williamson County vans, which are 23 now that we have on the road in this vanpool fleet. We have over 275 folks that use that. They're Williamson County residents that travel to their jobs every day, and we have a waiting list of at least 45 other people who are trying to get on these vans. So that's why we need the vans.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
1008-13 as amended is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 1008-14, resolution making appropriation to the Williams County Task Force against domestic violence, a nonprofit charitable organization. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Cook II. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against as amended.
All right, sir. Would you explain?
Amendment is revenues to actually affect revenue and expenditure lines as follows. Reserve Victims Assistance Program, $93,023. Expenditure is $93,023.
Is that your amendment, Commissioner Lynch?
I really don't need to see the correction, but we was asked to amend it.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Commissioner Cook, the second to the amendment to 1008-14. Any discussion on the amendment? You got the amendment loaded? If you're in favor of the amendment, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
The amendment passes, 23, yes. Any further explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
No, sir.
Any questions of Commissioner Lynch on 1008-14 as amended? Commissioner Williams, please.
Is this, in reading this resolution, Commissioner Lynch, if you know, is this amount to be collected, is this be collected through added court cost?
Yes. That's my understanding.
It's a statutorily authorized fee.
Well, we passed, we passed last month, I was not here, and I would have argued against it at the time, but the court cost in this state or in this county are outrageously high. And they continue to go up. And it's almost got to the point where it's almost denying people access to the courts. What we have is a captured audience, and everybody just wants to tap on fees to and attach to court costs people that may be trying to get access to the court, that people get themselves in problems or whatever. But still, you can come into court now and have a fine of maybe $350, and court cost could be anywhere from 1100 to 1500. So people don't understand the, and people just can't afford that, and that's a real problem. So I don't know that we should be attacking, attacking on more court cost. Thank you.
Other questions on resolution 1008-14 as amended? Commissioner Cook, please.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I thought this money was already taken out, and they're just asking to use it. So it's not a new charge. It's a charge that's been there.
General Helper's here. She may be able to clarify that.
Welcome, General.
Thank you. This was approved by the county legislature, or county commission, I'm sorry, about a year or so ago, and it is authorized by the state, and the county just enabled the additional cost which goes for victim services. So this $93,000 is money that's already been collected by the county, and what we're doing is moving it into a fund so that we can go ahead and start using the funding for victim services.
Okay.
So it's not a new cost. It's been within approval at least for a year or so.
Thank you, General. General, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
On your podium, you heard my diatribe about the court cost. What's the state's position on that kind of thing?
Commissioner, I think it's probably difficult for me necessarily to comment on it. I think certainly it depends on what those costs are being used for. In this case, certainly, the district attorney's office has been very supportive of it because we are going to use that money to further our victim witness services within the county.
Thank you, General.
Thank you, ma'am. Other questions? C-9, 1008-14 is amended, is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 1008-15, resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-9 assessors budget by $3,187.50 for educational incentive salary supplements. Revenues to come from state funds. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Langston II. Thank you. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
What this is, is a bonus to the employees of the tax assessor's office that receive so much education. They have to receive so much education before they get it. It's paid by the state.
Other questions on this resolution? I see none. 1008-15 is up for your consideration. Commissioner Lynch? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution 1008-16, resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-9 Circuit Court Clerk's budget by $10,000. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson II. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
This is money that's been collected through fees to buy equipment for the office.
Any questions of Commissioner Lynch on 1008-16? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 1008-18, resolution appropriating and amending the 2008, 2009 animal control budget by Revenues to come from unappropriated fund balance. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes II. Public Health Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
What this is, is this money's been given by private donations to go into the fund to operate the animal control.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We always appreciate donations. I'm curious, though, about the unappropriated fund balance. Why, if it's donations, we're having to take it out of fund balance?
Maybe Mr. Coleman can answer that, but I can't.
My memory is it's a contribution from last year.
Yes, that's correct. At the end of the year, it has to be closed into fund balance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This was also mentioned in the committee meeting, and I wanted in the minutes that the discussion at the Public Health Committee was that these funds be used totally and exclusively for the animals. And that needs to be in the record so that it's reflected, because that's the purpose for which it was given, and that's the purpose for which this money is to be spent. 1008-18 is up, says amend. Are we amending?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay. If you're in favor of resolution 1008-18, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 1008-19, a resolution declaring the intent of Williamson County, Tennessee, to reimburse itself for certain expenditures relating to public works projects with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt obligations to be issued by the county. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Brockman. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
The main, I'm going to let Mr. Coleman explain, but the main thrust of this is to allow Mr. Coleman and Mr. Anderson, the mayor, with the bond council people to buy, sell these bonds when it's the best advantage to the county. That's what the main thrust of it is. But there's several things in there, and I'll let Mr. Coleman explain all four of them.
Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to try to bring all these together and hopefully be able to answer your questions at the end. Needless to say, things in the market are changing daily and sometimes by the hour, and we have been working over the last couple of weeks primarily with the school projects that were bought before you last month, as well as those other projects that you have approved earlier in the year, beginning in July. In this reimbursement resolution, the first one I'll discuss is something our bond council has advised us to do, and I might just give you a little background. In the past, once you passed intent to fund resolution, from that time on, any money we spent towards those projects, we could go back and reimburse those funds. There've been some changes and some tightening in the IRS regulations concerning that, and so bond council has suggested we pass a reimbursement resolution. Now, there's a second reason to that also that really flows through these other resolutions, and that is that we are trying our very best to be as flexible as we can in this market. Our normal process was that we would have been going to market to sell 20-year bonds either this month or next month for the projects that you've already approved. But because of the market conditions, we feel that it's best for the county to put off going for long-term 20-year debt till sometime after the first of the year, January, February, maybe in March, and maybe even longer. That will depend on the circumstances and what happens in the market. But this reimbursement resolution will give us that flexibility that whenever we sell those bonds, we will be able to go back and reimburse ourself for any money that we've spent out of our operating cash to get these projects going. The, if, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to discuss number 20 also as we, the next one is the intent, the initial resolution on general obligation bonds. The initial resolution is something you see each time we go to the bond market, if there are any general obligation projects that are not school projects. We have to take those initial resolutions, advertise them for a 20-day period, and give the public an opportunity to have a petition calling for a referendum on those bonds if they're to be sold or not. The public does not have that opportunity on school bonds. They cannot call a referendum on school bonds. So this initial resolution is only for the non-school projects. The reason we're asking to do that at this time is we'd like to get the 20-day advertising period over. Again, I keep using this word flexibility. Once we pass that 20-day advertising period, we have the flexibility that whenever the market is right, we'll be ready to sell those bonds, and we won't have to wait for that 20-day period. Resolutions 21 and 22 that were late filed, our bond anticipation notes, again, that word flexibility. If we're not ready to go to the market with the 20-year bonds, this will allow us to borrow all or part of that money to operate on until we're ready to go for permanent financing. And I have put a schedule at your desk of all the projects that you have approved. You'll see the top portion there was about $24.8 million, projects that were approved earlier in the year, and then below that, the $17 million that was approved just last month for schools, or a total of $42 million. We can discuss each one of those individually, but at this point, my main thing is all four of these resolutions are projects you have approved. We're not asking for any new funds. We're just asking for the flexibility to go to the market when conditions are more favorable than they are today. Even the bond anticipation notes, we would not anticipate borrowing all that money at one time. We'll try to schedule that and only draw it when we need it. A bond anticipation note, and Mr. Sam Cruz is here with Stevens, and certainly give you a better explanation than I can, but those can be as temporary as we want them to be, out to two years, and then they can be renewed for two, two-year terms. So they could actually end up being six years. Now, we don't anticipate that. That's the very outside flexibility that we would get. But we would certainly feel that hopefully with the improvement in the economy and the market, that sometime in the next six months, we would go for permanent financing and repay those. But again, not knowing what lies in the future, we're just asking for the flexibility. Mr. Chairman, I know that's a lot of information, but I'll try to answer anything I can.
Okay, let's take them one at a time. 1008-19, Commissioner Para?
In regard to this resolution and the ones that follow, inside this resolution is the historic county courthouse, and I'd like David maybe to, if I could, Chairman, to speak at the status of that project, and I'd like to have follow-up on that, please.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That project was bid out a little over a month ago, I believe. The exact date fails me. And we sol- The exact date fails me. And we selected and sent letters to all the apparent low bidders. We have sent contracts to all of those bidders. At this point in time, we only have three contracts that have actually been completed and signed by the mayor to get that project started. That was the demolition, the concrete work, and one other. Just a moment. These were the project, the parts of the project that the construction managers felt like we needed to get going as quickly as possible, and that's why we went and sent those out first. Structural steel, because of the rising prices in steel, they felt like it was very important to get that contract out, let the steel contractor get that steel ordered before the prices increased. So those three contracts have completed the cycle. The mayor has signed those. They are in force. There are several other contracts totaling approximately $3.2 million that have been prepared. They've been sent to the contractors. The final step of the mayor signing them has not happened at this point in time. And I called counselor early today and asked him if he could help us to answer that tonight, just what flexibility we might have in that, and I'm not sure where we might stand on those.
Let me get the follow-up from Commissioner Para, and then I'll yield to counsel. Commissioner Para?
Well, my follow-up was I'd like to ask counsel to speak about that, and then I do have one more.
Counselor?
In general, the contracts, if they are not funded, or if the commission were to withdraw authorization for the projects, if the contract had not been completed, would terminate. There may be some incidental liabilities attached to that, expenses and such for the particular contracting party, but as a technical matter, the contract's not completed until signed by both. The flip side of that is there is a doctrine in contract law that when an offer is made and accepted prior to changing or withdrawal, that you can reasonably rely on that, and that would be where the incidental damages would be. We do not think that would include anything like lost profits, but this is not necessarily the clearest area of the law as well.
I just can't, right now, vote for the funding of this $6.5 million. There's just, with the economy the way it is right now, this is not a project that we have to do at this moment in time. As I understand it from Mr. Coleman, the building is sound. It's not raining in the building like it is Fleming Hall, so I'd make an amendment to take $6.5 million off of this. Thank you.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to amend 10-08-19 by $6.5 million. Commissioners, is that your motion?
It is. If I can say one more thing, and I know a lot of people worked hard on this project, and I hate to pull it at this time, but I just don't think it's time. Thanks.
What's the amount of the amendment?
To take off $6.5 million off the total.
All right, okay. Motion is made and seconded by Commissioner Greer to reduce the amount on 10-08-19 by $6.5 million. Discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Davis?
The question is more broad, and we can come back to me after the amendment.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Williams, please, on the amendment?
On the amendment, I look at it just a little different than Commissioner Para does, because I look at it from a legal standpoint. And the top part of that courthouse is going to be used as a courtroom, and there's going to be a connecting way over to it that is greatly needed for witness rooms and conference rooms and that. So we have, when we built the courthouse, it was supposed to be for like 50 years, and there are many times now that when people are limited, they don't have places to go. We're already at our peak. So from that standpoint, I would have to say that it is a needed project, and if we delay it, it's only going to get worse than the current courthouse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can understand Commissioner Para's concern about the funding, given the economic climate that we're in, but I feel very strongly that this particular building is an icon for the county, and I think the reason that we're here asking for the funding is that it is needed, and I don't see any reason to delay it, and this is, it's absolutely important for us to step up and be responsible for the most historic resource in the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith on the amendment?
Question for Mr. Coleman, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Coleman, you said the contracts that had not been fully executed yet amounted to about $3.2 million. Yes, sir, that's correct. What then is the amount of the contracts that have been executed? With just under $2 million, 1.973. Was the $6.5 million mentioned by Commissioner Para the total of the project, including those contracts that have already been executed? Yes, sir, that's correct. Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the amendment? Commissioner Hayes?
If I might just follow up on what Commissioner Williams said. We constantly hear about how much there is not room for the jewelry people when they convene, and one plan was the large meeting room would be both secured and unsecured, could be either way, for use for the jewelry departments as well as for public use, and I think that that could be a real benefit to everybody involved. Also, working and knowing full well that we do have a new city wayfaring sign grant that was received, and they administered to a company to find what was the brand that would be used for this county promotions. The brand coming back from this national group was the courthouse, and that would be proposed to be the symbol of all the wayfaring signs with a particular color palette that would be pleasing for all the cities and the municipalities within the county, as well as the unincorporated county. So I do think it's important that we press on with our courthouse.
Any other discussion on the amendment? The amendment is to reduce or deduct $6.5 million from a total on this resolution for the courthouse. There's no further discussion on the amendment. We are voting on the amendment. If you're in favor of the amendment, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Three yes, 20 no.
Three yes and 20 no to amend that amount out. So that amendment fails. I'll come back to Commissioner Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question probably is best addressed by Mr. Coleman. I'm concerned about the 20-day notice that we advertise. By the time we're advertising it, we've already issued contracts and expended money in some cases, based on an intent to fund passed by the commission. In that case, if the public comes back with a referendum and says, "We don't want to do this," we've already done it. So it seems like we've got it a little bit backwards. Are we in trouble if we do it this way? I know we've done it that way in the past and hadn't been challenged, but if there's a challenge, aren't we in trouble legally?
Commissioner and Mr. Chairman, I think the initial resolution is not an approval of the projects. It's an approval of the bond issue. And should the public come back and say, "We don't want to issue these bonds," then we would have to pursue some other means of financing. But it's not an approval of the projects. It's an approval of whether to issue the bonds or not.
We follow.
Go ahead.
But it's kind of the same thing, because if we don't have the money, we don't, you can't issue the bonds, you don't have the money, but we already voted to go forward with the project and are expending money at that point. So it still seems like to me we're putting the cart before the horse then.
Commissioner, the worst answer that I ever like to give anybody, as we've always done it that way, so I'm not going to tell you that. But the only time that I can recall that we've had a referendum was, I think, a year before I came here in '95. In 1994, I believe, we had a referendum called on a Parkinson wreck bond issue at that time, and I don't know the particulars of how the timeframe of the approval of the project and the approval of the bond, so I can't really tell you how that proceeded, but that would be the only other experience that I would have with this type of situation.
Is there any experience anywhere in the state on this issue?
Well, I'd say that, you know, we filed an initial resolution on every bond issue that we do, so we do have that experience.
Counselor?
All the contracts that we sign are contingent on the approval of or the appropriation of the funding necessary. So without the appropriation, the contract terminates, and that's where you may get into some liabilities on expenses, but not lost profits and such. So those should only be what are reasonably relied upon copies sometime, those type of things. It should be minimal liabilities. It wouldn't be as if you just breached the contract because we built in a provision that they're conditioned on the appropriation of the money.
I follow that, Counselor, but to use another example, what's on the agenda tonight is a property on Beasley Drive, which my understanding is we have closed on that, but we haven't yet funded it. And in that case, wouldn't we be liable for action against the county by the person who, by the entity that lost that sale and hadn't been able to advertise it and that kind of thing?
I'd have to look at the specific contract on that piece of property, because that's not the same as some of these projects that we go out to bid on, and I'd have to go back and look at the resolutions as well, because I believe we authorized the purchase of it. So at that point now, it would be up to you to figure out how you're going to appropriate the money. It's a little different than the intent to fund that you would do for a project like the courthouse.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, on that particular project, the $4.5 million, we did bring to you a $4.5 million capital outlay note to be borrowed internally, and that was approved, and we have borrowed that money for ourself. So should this reimbursement fail, we have funded that, but it would just come out of our cash.
And I was just using as an example, but it could have been any other contract, or in the case of the courthouse, we have contracts out there, to go to another example, but we haven't yet issued the bond. So I'm going to stay confused on this, so we might just want to move on.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, and I know Commissioner Davis is asking a good question. We're in uncharted waters right here. We've never been in a situation like this. We've never had to ask these kind of questions. We've always done this as a business unusual, and we've had the intent to fund. Once the intent to fund was passed, that was your word, you were going to fund it, and we proceeded on to do those projects. So for all of us, this is just uncharted territory.
Thank you, and I appreciate your patience.
Commissioner Bean, please.
I'd like to call the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question been called for. All in favor, call the question. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, question has been called. 10-08-19 is up for consideration. If you're in favor of this resolution as presented, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you. Resolution is approved unanimously. Resolution 10-08-20, resolution and issue resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 14 million in aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Cook II. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
Well, you've heard Mr. Coleman's explanation. I just got one thing to say. Because of the business sense of our mayor, we've got a big fund balance. If everything else fails, we can go in that fund balance and get that money to pay for that courthouse.
Thank you, sir. Other questions on 10-08-20? There's a proposed amendment that's offered, that's attached to you. As you can see, the proposed amendment is worded here, amending section one, and I'll entertain, Mr. Lynch, would you entertain that motion to amend, please?
Move for approval on amendment?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Mills. You've got the amendment in front of you that's replacing section number one. Any discussion on the amendment? If you're in favor of the amendment, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button?
No.
Everybody voted, wishes to vote, please, on the amendment? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you. The amendment is adopted, and now, resolution 10-08-20 as amended is up for consideration. Any further discussion on 10-08-20? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Twenty-two yes and one no. Resolution is adopted as amended. Twenty-two yes, one Resolution 10-08-21, resolution authorizing Williamson County mayor to enter into an easement with the city of Franklin for the installation of water and sewer improvements. Commissioner Davis, please.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Property Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you.
Where are we?
Right over.
Okay.
This is 10-8-21.
That's the end of the others.
It's what happens when you drop your packet in the yard. All right, let's back up a minute. Late file resolution number 10-08-22, a resolution authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing general obligation bond anticipation notes in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 23 million of Williamson County, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal and of interest on the notes, and authorizing the renewal or extension of outstanding bond anticipation notes. Commissioner Lynch?
I move for approval.
Second.
Second, Bob Barnwell is the second. The Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
Well, Mr. Coleman has done an excellent job explaining, and I just, it bothers me about the tax being mentioned in there.
Other questions of 10, on 10-08-22? I see none. If you're in favor of 10-08-22, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button? Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Commissioner Mills? Court of vote, please?
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Thank you. Twenty-two yes, one no. Resolution is adopted. All right, now. Late file resolution number 23. Resolution number, resolution authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing county district school bond anticipation notes in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 17 million of Williamson County, Tennessee, making provisions for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal and interest on the notes. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Langston, the second. Discussion, please. Commissioner Lynch?
It's already been discussed and explained, too, but I just want, I think y'all ought to vote for it.
Any other questions? Any committee? Any other questions? I see none. 10-08-23. It's already been discussed and explained. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, you no button? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Twenty-two yes, one no. Resolution is adopted. All right, moving up, resolution 10-08-6. This again is appropriations resolution. It's listed three down on the agenda. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with the state of Tennessee and amending the 2008, '09 ag expo and property management budgets by an amount not to exceed $3,188 for our tree. an amount not to exceed $3,188 for our tree planting grant. Commissioner Brockman.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Property Committee report.
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero again.
Thank you. Explanation, please, Commissioner Brockman.
This is a grant. We have a 50% local match, and we will have a more beautiful park-like setting at the ag expo, and we will green, and let's vote yes.
Any questions of Commissioner Brockman? I see none. If you're in favor of 10-08-6, press the yes button. Oppose, your no button?
Who could vote against trees?
Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, and zero, no. Unanimously adopted. Resolution 10-08-4. Resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williams County Board of Commissioners relating to Rule 7.1. Commissioner Hayes, please.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hancock, the second. This went before the Rules Committee. Five, four, zero against. Commissioner Hayes, explanation, please.
Yes, I'm going to ask Attorney Cook, if you would, to come up for further explanation of this. But basically, the current language in Rule 7.1 is now obsolete and because of the passage of public chapter 871. And so we're doing some housekeeping here to make it all go together and blend, and I think the attorney can answer any questions.
Sounds pretty good to me. Any questions on, because this has gone through the committees? Any, any further questions on the information that should've been furnished? I see none. If you're in favor of 10-08-4, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution number 10-08-5. Resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williams County Board of Commissioners relating to Rule 8.1B. Commissioner Hayes.
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Cook, the second. Rules Committee, five, four, zero against. Commissioner Hayes.
Yes, the current language in the Rules 8.1B talks about the obsolete language which provides for the election of a secretary. As you know, in most of our committees, we have our staff, very capable staff, there serving as our secretary, so we just need to clean up the language of our rules to concur with what we actually do.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions of Commissioner Hayes? I see none. If you're in favor of 10-08-5, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 10-08-7. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute an agreement as well as other related documents with the town of Nolansville for the exchange of real property. Commissioner Brockman.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Green, the second. Parks and Recreation Committee. That passed the Parks and Recreation Committee unanimously. I don't recall the vote. It was five and oh or something like that, but anyway, did pass the Parks and Rec. Property Committee.
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman.
Yes, this will allow us to exchange property with the town of Nolansville and allow them to have an approved Public Works improvement project.
Commissioner Williams, please.
On this resolution, there's a third page attached. What does this have? AHA Trustee Leadership Network. What does that have to do with this?
Yeah, that's, you need to look at the new packet that Mr. Lane sent you, 10-08-7, that I talked about at the front of the meeting. It had nothing to do with, just got hung in one of those staples behind it. So look at 10-08-7 as clarification as to what's there. Commissioner Green, if you would, you can, you can give us in a minute and a half update as to what's happening here and share that. You've done a great job through the various committees, but share with the commission because there's no need to rehash this blow-by-blow unless we need to. So if you could give us an introduction as to what we're doing here. You and the Commissioner Little have been working on this, Tommy Little, so tell us what this accomplishes, if you would, please, sir.
Public Works project in Nolansville. And part of, if, if you're not familiar with Nolansville, they've redirected Clovercroft Road so that it comes out south of town and bypasses the city and comes back in on Rocky Fork at Newsome Lane. And the process of trying to get this road finished and provide access to the park, because at the present time, as the way it's, it's set up now, is there would only be access off Nolansville Road on Rocky Fork to the park and no through traffic. What we're trying to do, and what Nolansville's trying to do is, is this Public Works project is to give us access to the park from also the east part of the county. And the land swap is really essence, a radius turn off Newsome Lane onto Rocky Fork to allow them to do that and give them stacking space on the road to, that does not inhibit traffic that much. The mayor is here today, Mayor Lawthers. If you have any more questions, I'm sure she would like to elaborate on it, but in the conversation I had with her earlier, there's presently 400 families involved in baseball over there and 100 and plus families involved in football, which takes place on those fields over there. When you have those type of attendance at those functions, I think it's in essence that we do this land swap to allow us to have that access off Newsome Lane and also of Rocky Fork to the park. Any other questions? I'm sure the mayor would be glad to enlighten you on.
Are there any questions of anybody, this, that has gone through all the committees of the county commission? Any questions at all on 10-08-7? Mayor, if you'll stand up, we recognize you. You've also got some of your aldermen back there with you. Come up and introduce them to us, and we'll vote.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you so much, Commission, for having us tonight. I'd like to introduce Alderman Jimmy Alexander, currently serving, and our town engineer, Don Schwartz, and we greatly appreciate you considering this resolution before you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
10-08-7 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution 10-08-8. Resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into an easement with the Harpeth Valley Utilities District of Davidson and Williamson County, Tennessee, for the installation and maintenance of utilities. Commissioner Brockman.
I move for approval.
Second. Second, Commissioner Williams, the second. Property Committee report.
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman, please.
This is, will provide an easement for Harpeth Valley Utilities, and I believe it's the, is this the Sneed Road easement that is required for them to upgrade their water and sewer line?
Thank you, ma'am. Other questions? Any questions of Commissioner Brockman on 10-08-8? I see none. If you're in favor of 10-08-8, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution 10-08-9. Resolution to express Williamson County's support legislation to require all future ethics laws apply to both state and local governments. Commissioner Barnwell.
Move for approval.
Second. Second, Commissioner Chalfont, explanation, please. Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes, as you can see, 22, 24 has assigned this resolution. This is just a requesting that laws that may be adopted by the Tennessee General Assembly in relation to ethics and other related instances apply to both themselves and to us instead of one or the other. I've spoken with our state representatives, and they will carry this ball forward for us at the state level when we, if we get two-thirds vote on this, which I hope we do. Commissioner Naron and I are going to the Tennessee County Commission Association Fall Conference at the end of this month, and with the approval of this, we'd like to start chatting with our fellow county commissioners to see if we can also get a mirrored legislation to go through other counties within the state, which we feel would provide additional support for our people going forward with this at state level. If we get a lot of counties to get on board with us, then the state will have to probably listen to this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Williams, please.
I was asked at the last meeting, I would have signed this if I'd been able to do that, and I sit on the Ethics Committee anyway, so I would ask it to be passed as approval.
Thank you, sir. Other discussion? Commissioner Hancock, please.
Mr. Chairman, I applaud Mr. Barnwell and your efforts to do this. We all, I think, know what caused these gyrations from the state, and then they, doesn't apply it to them, it's just terrible, because they're the ones that was having the problem to start with, and I appreciate you coming forward with this, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Other, other questions, comments before we vote? Commissioner Langston.
Mr. Chairman, this would apply to any future laws that are passed and would not apply necessarily then to the Open Meetings Act that's already in existence.
But they are reviewing the Open Meetings Act. They didn't do anything. Last year, and this is really what sort of upset me about the fact they didn't do anything, because I think the opens meetings law is totally atrocious for a county commissioner to live by in some instances.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch, please.
I admire you fellows trying to get this done, but the whole ethics of the state's the biggest joke there ever was. I saw in the paper yesterday where one legislature was on the ag committee and her husband received $28,000 grant from the state, and you tell me that's unethical? But still, everything was all right. What she did wasn't wrong. Ethics with the state's a complete joke. Everybody on this county commission knows it.
Other questions, comments? See none. Resolution 10-08-9 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution 10-08-10. Resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter an easement with the metropolitan government of Davidson, Nashville, and Davidson County for the installation and maintenance of sewer disturbances. Commissioner Brockman, please.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Green, the second. Property Committee.
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Excuse me. This one got shuffled. This allows the extension of sewer services into eastern Williamson County, and in order to properly do that, they need an easement.
Questions of Commissioner Brockman? Commissioner Green, please.
Just to kind of fill y'all in on what this, what this entails. This started out with just a few businessmen there in Nolansville wanting to extend sewer to their businesses, and since then, it's evolved into the entire Hillworth Historic District, who has signed on to having sewer installed in the Historic District of Nolansville. This is not going to cost the county any money, and it is something that is desperately needed for the Historic District in Nolansville that we pass this. Basically, to give you an idea of where it is, I don't know how familiar you are with Nolansville, but the soccer field, the soccer complex near the north end of the Historic District, there's a manhole there. Sewer already exists on the opposite side of the road. All we have to do is come from there, under the creek, across the road, and we can put sewer into the entire Historic District in Nolansville. This desperately needs to be done.
Any questions of Commissioner Green or Commissioner Brockman? I see none. 10-08-10 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 10-08-11. Resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agricultural Exposition Center for the event "Road to the Horse." Commissioner Brockman.
Move for approval.
Second. Who was the second? Commissioner Walton, the second. Property Committee.
Property Committee, three, four, zero against, two pass.
Okay, explanation, please.
Yes, this will allow a, a new event that's been coming to Rutherford County at MTSU, and they're very interested in, in offering this "Road to the Horse" in Williamson County at the Ag Expo Center. And as part of their program, they do offer a hospitality suite, and in order to have access, and in order to allow them to serve alcoholic beverages, we heard from the, from Kenny about this particular organization, and they have a good reputation, and it's a huge draw for people interested in showing horsemanship in terms of the natural training of horses.
Any questions of Commissioner Brockman on 10-08-11? In favor of 10-08-11, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Court of vote, please.
Sixteen, yes. Three abstentions, four, no.
Sixteen, yes. Three abstentions, and four, no. So the resolution does pass. It requires 13 votes to pass, so resolution 10-08-11 does pass. Thank you very much. Resolution number 10-08-17. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a contract between the state of Tennessee of Transportation, Department of Transportation, and Williamson County for a trash collecting grant for fiscal year 2008 and '09. Commissioner Lynch.
Yes.
Motion made, second. Commissioner Hayes, the second. Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee. Commissioner Hancock.
Seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
By far, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
This is just a grant between the state of Tennessee of Transportation and the mayor. For this kind of grant, we have to apply for it every year.
Questions of Commissioner Lynch on the grant? 10-08-17 is up for consideration. In favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into an easement with the City of Franklin for the installation of water and sewer improvements. And now, back to you, Commissioner Davis.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, the second. Property Committee.
Six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Davis.
This is just to allow the mayor to work with the City of Franklin for an easement on the county property where the Animal Control Center is. It's a long Mack Hatcher.
Any questions of Commissioner Davis on this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Court of vote, please.
Sure.
Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you. Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes. Resolution unanimously. Resolution unanimously adopted. Any, Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request that Commissioner Smith made on the sales tax, Joey Davis ran upstairs and printed these off, so I will ask Diane to help me pass these out, if you would, Mr. Chairman?
Please, thank you.
And this will give you a track record from 1996 on the sales tax. You will notice on here, you've got after state costs, and then you've got those listed by municipalities, all of the municipalities, so this will give you a track record in which to look at.
Any other announcements or comments before we adjourn this evening? Thank you, sir. Thank each of you for participation in the discussion tonight. Just about everyone said, hey, let's get out and go home so we can watch the ballgame, so we're out of here at about 8:52. Entertain a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.